Apologize about that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting this evening, October 16th, I believe is the date. Yes, correct. Thank you. My name is Montez McCurtis. I will be the acting chair this evening. Our chairperson, Jordan, is absent. Is unexcused absence. Okay? Let me first identify our, we are a five-member board. You need majority, three out of five. You need three votes in favor of to grant the variance. This evening, we are only four, so I will offer every applicant the opportunity if you want to continue with this evening, or if you want a delay to a future meeting. So, just only available to you if you wish, okay? Also Mercedes and Bruce, our city, our assistant, as well as our building inspector is with us, and George, our legal counsel is with us as well. Let me go through some procedures, explain a little bit about us, okay? The application material that will be discussed tonight, including proposed resolution and other documents, are, will all be available on the city website. Also, on the city website, there's a link to our rules of procedures for the ZBA, okay? Taking a moment to explain our procedures, we will hear each application in the order that it's noted on the agenda, and this evening, we only have one agenda item. For this application, we will hear first from the applicant, and then we'll open up to the floor to the public, if there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment, okay? We're going to limit comments to five minutes, if there are any, right? We're asking everyone to refrain from repeating comments that have already been stated. If you agree with the previous, just state so, okay? The zoning board of appeals hears and determines appeals for, from administrative decisions, petitions and variances and other such matters that may be required by the city council or the laws of New York State, okay? I do want to point out, very important, that the ZBA, your zoning board, is limited to granting the minimum variance necessary to address the needs of the applicant, the health, the safety and the welfare of the community. So with, with that said, that's enough on rules and procedures. Everyone get a chance to view last month's meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept or deny or modify last month's meeting minutes?
Move to accept.
Motion by Stowe.
Second.
By Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. May I please have a motion to open up the agenda item number one?
So moved.
Motion by Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that said, I'll ask the applicant to please come up to the podium, identify your name and address.
Hello. It's good to see you again. My name is John Cannon. My wife is over there, Gina Cannon, and we live at 41 Ver Plank Avenue, Beacon, New York, 12508.
So much better, thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, we have a variance in for our parking in the front. We, a contractor, put it in for us and didn't know that, what the rules were, and he put it in the wrong distance from the property line and put a new, another parking space in front of our front door. He since told us that he would fix it, but first I have to get it approved for any changes. The proposal that I put down was for the part that's in front of the front door to make it into a sidewalk. He would cut the cement out, fill it with grass, and, and then leave one sidewalk going up and over in front of the front door. And then, on the other side of the parking, we're too close to the property line. I believe I had it three feet, around three feet from the property line, which means it's incorrect. It has to be five feet. So my proposal is to cut off the amount that does not agree with the rules of five feet. And, and then he'll move that out of there, and then we'll put grass in there. We were also proposing that possibly we could put beside the garage, a parking area there with just gravel, or some other kind of material that's not cement or pavement. So be a little driveway beside the garage. Now, that's okay if it's not approved. I mean, if we can just go with what, cutting the cement, making it up to the proper distance from the property line, and fix the part in front of the front door, that would be acceptable to us.
So I'm looking at the picture here. Is this where it is?
So...
These two red light can't turn it facing straight up, is it?
It's a little hard to explain if it's not on the television, but here's my understanding. Over here is the current concrete driveway.
Yeah.
He has an extension over here, up to the house, that he's proposing from this distance to the property line would be five feet. I have a question on that, because the property is on an angle, so it would have to be this end here would have to be five feet. Now, he just said that he would like some gravel up here to possibly park a car, but that then will also require a five feet distance.
And he doesn't have it, does he?
I don't see how he would have it, because he only has six and a half feet. So...
So that would be too close to what your measurements, what you're thinking, right? It'd be too close to the parking beside the garage?
And you didn't really present us with diagrams that show the dimensions that clearly. So, with the driveway on the side, both the existing concrete and extending with gravel, I'm not sure how you would get the five foot side yard.
Okay.
I'd love to see diagrams on how you would achieve such.
Ken, I ask you, you, from what you've said, you basically need for yourself and your wife two parking spaces, correct?
Well, it's my wife, myself, we have two cars.
Right.
But we also have parents that are disabled, and they, they have to park...
Oh, you didn't mention that.
On the side street, to be able, you know, to get...
Well, you could park on the side street.
But then, they would not be able to walk, I mean...
Well, if you parked on the side street, why can't you park in your garage that frees up a space?
Because there's no room in there right now for parking.
Could you clean it out and park in there?
Yeah, yeah, we could. Yes.
Because, looking at this, you're proposing, the part that's in front of the porch, just making a little cutout out of it and planting grass there?
And make it into a sidewalk. I kind of, I have a line on there showing you that.
But, yeah. And then, on the other side of the house, the garage side of the house, taking two feet off what you put in?
Well, actually, it's, I have on there, it's like three feet at one point, and, and two feet at another point, because the thing's at an angle.
Okay, so three and two.
It's not straight.
Right.
So, and you have to do five feet, so...
And then adding a gravel area that really butts right up to the property line?
Right. So, I wasn't sure about the rules on that.
Same rules.
The rules are the same, whether it's, if it's a gravel or...
Yes.
Okay, so then, so then, no. All we want, need is the variance for the parking, for the, for the drive, the two, the driveway cutting off the, the end to make it five feet, and fixing the, the sidewalk, making that other piece into a sidewalk. I mean, right now, we don't have a sidewalk going up to the front door.
Right, go out to the front door.
So are you saying that from the point of the end of the blacktop?
Right.
To the property line will be five feet in the upper rightmost corner of that?
Right. Yeah, the closest point, yes.
Are you going to modify the porch, that there's stairs coming down to that new sidewalk? Or is there just going to be, because the way I'm looking at it, I...
Yeah, no, I was proposing to have...
To redo the front stairs?
No, to cut the, cut the cement, so that there's a walkway going in front of the porch. I have it marked, it marked on the paper there.
Yeah. But you're not, the stairs are perpendicular to the house, the entrance.
Right, I know. We'd have to still walk around and walk upstairs.
So you want, so there's, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you weren't from there.
No, no, go ahead.
So, I honestly don't see the purpose of the sidewalk, because it really doesn't get you up to the steps.
Well, because if you have cars parked in the parking, then you have nowhere to walk, except between them and around them.
So, is, my understanding when I read this was, where it says sidewalk and has a little arrow, that's your existing sidewalk that does not connect to the...
No, it's a slab. It's a slab for parking. It was put in there by the contractor.
This part, sidewalk, it says, isn't that the existing sidewalk that does not connect to the stairs?
No, 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 no.
That was my drawing today that I scheduled, that you're looking at.
Yeah.
And this red line here, everything in between is concrete.
Is pavement.
That's what I had asked, right now, that's all concrete.
That's all concrete, yes.
I just went and visited the home. It's all concrete.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it's three cars wide.
What the applicant is proposing is to open part of it up and put a grass landing here to give this the perception of a walkway coming up the yard over to the driveway.
Oh, okay.
Is what he's proposing, okay? And then, the other question is that Elaine and I were chatting about, was on the right side, at the shortest point, or the less width point, is there five feet between the concrete and the property line?
And the property line, yeah.
If there is, then he might not need us to approve anything here. Obviously, we have to look at the whole thing for substantial and also front yard parking. So, the two topics are, will there be a consistent five feet or more on this side? And then, what is the purpose of opening up this grass landing and having that walkway here?
Well, in, my, my initial comment would be, we, we really need a real survey that shows the actual...
That's where it is now.
That's the existing, there you go.
For the record, I, I put up a picture of the existing driveway on the screen.
Thank you.
And Bruce, can I ask, because this was something we talked about in an earlier meeting, that's completely out of compliance with the zoning, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, both the additions, on, on that side and that side, are both breaking zoning regs, right?
Yes, correct.
On, on the right side, it's breaking the zoning, because it's too close to the lot line, and on the other side, it's in front of the house.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Now, Bruce, just to, just so I understand as well, it's not necessarily just that it's too close to the property line, it's also that you're not supposed to have parking in the front?
Right, there's supposed to be no parking in the front yard.
Or the side yard above it.
In the required front yard or side yard, you know, closer than five feet to the property line.
Mm-hmm, okay. So...
But the, the piece in the middle, the, the original existing driveway is legit, right? Because it's going to a garage.
Yes, that's right in front of the garage.
Right.
So that's leading, leading to the garage.
So, Bruce, just so the board understands as well, and the applicant understands, if, for example, the concrete on the right side of the driveway there, along the property line, was cut to be five feet from the property line, the only relief is having parking in the front yard?
Correct.
But if it's less than five feet, it's parking in the front yard plus the variance for the side yard setback?
Correct, yes, it would need two variances at that point.
Okay, okay. And, and to be clear for the board, right now, the way this has been noticed and looked at is having parking in the front yard at all. So if there is maneuvering today that requires a side yard variance, it would need to be renoticed for another meeting to give the public an opportunity to speak about that side yard variance, which is technically not before the board at this moment. It just depends how it comes out. If, if there's a cut that satisfies that side yard variance, and we're just focused on the variance for parking in the front, we're good. But if anything changes, any additional variances, the public needs an opportunity to speak on it.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not sure how your proposal satisfies the five yard, because on your drawings, you talk about, there's a, one part you say nine foot, nine inch from the house to the property line.
Yes.
And then, you say from the driveway to the property line, because it's on an angle, there's 10 feet. So, cutting two feet off doesn't give you a five yard from the property line?
Five feet.
You propose cutting two feet off doesn't give you that. You'd have to cut five feet off. If you look at the drawing that you've submitted to us, you can come here and I'll show you.
Yes. I could pull it up on the screen as well.
Okay, thank you. So your diagram says from this point to this point is 10 feet. This point is the property line, no?
Um, yes.
So if you cut two feet off, that makes it eight feet.
But the building actually goes out further.
You have to go from the measurement, so it's on an, on an angle, right?
Yes.
So, your, any point here, your lowest point?
The distance that I had between is four feet, that I measured from here to there.
Can you, can you get us?
Down here...
As Judy requested, we're going to need a proper survey.
It's, this is on, we can't figure this, I can't figure this out.
You're talking, this is scale, this is definitely not the scale.
Well, I went by centimeters, and each centimeter was two feet. I just did that just so, to give it an idea.
Yeah.
So if that's four feet, as you just said, cutting two feet only gives you four foot. You need five foot from the property line.
Well, no, four foot from the property line, right here. I measured it, from there to there.
Is four foot?
Is four foot.
So the extra two feet off is, gives you six feet off the property line, is what you're saying?
At this, at this point.
Yeah.
What about at the point here?
It's probably more.
There, I think I proposed more.
Three feet.
I don't know, your diagrams don't show it.
Yeah.
You, you really should get us a proper survey.
I'd like to ask a question or make a point, I guess, which is, isn't the simplest solution to tear up the current extension of the driveway, instead of asking for any variance at all? The simplest thing would be, your contractor built this without getting a variance from the city, and while it's an annoyance and it costs money and so on, the simplest thing is to just dig up the stuff that you put down, and be, go back to the original driveway, which theoretically would park three cars. And, and I wanted to ask this question, in the context...
Well, because there's one in the driveway, you can certainly fit two in the driveway, and one in the garage.
Not, not the original driveway.
No, it wouldn't.
No, you can't fit two cars on it, there's no way.
You can only fit them in the original driveway.
See, this is what I'm saying, I have no idea...
The original driveway is only wide enough for one car.
Right.
You can't park side by side.
No, but you can park...
And it's not deep enough...
It's not?
To park, you'd be out on the apron.
It's not deep enough. On the street, we're right on the street.
So what is the measurement from, this is why, like, if we had a, a professional, and that's what we need, we need, we need a real survey. So that we can, you know, I could just look at it and say, oh, that's this many feet. Like, what is this measurement? I don't see it here. The measurement from here to here. On a, on a survey, I'd know that immediately.
So, there, I have a survey pulled up.
Twenty-two point seven feet.
Yeah. This is a survey, it, it's a survey that does not indicate the additions.
Look on the monitor, sir.
Yeah. So, this is a survey, it does not indicate the additions, but this is the existing concrete driveway.
So from the sidewalk to the garage?
Twenty-two, yeah, that's right, twenty...
Twenty-two point seven.
Twenty-two feet.
According to the survey.
You can't fit one car behind each other on that.
So, I mean, you can't park two cars?
No.
One after the other in that, in 22 feet?
I don't know what the length of...
No, I don't think so.
I've driven by it, I've walked by it, you can't fit two cars in that driveway one behind the other, not without them blocking the sidewalk.
No, yeah.
You could pull in the garage and then park in the driveway, but you can't park behind each other.
They're trying to get parking for three cars.
You should go back to the podium and speak in the microphone.
You, sir, sir, sir.
You can, you can go back to the pedestal, so you could talk, so we can all hear.
Yeah, we got the diagram, so... So if you're trying to get parking for two cars, as you just said, why aren't you utilizing your gar, your garage?
Can she come up and help him?
Yeah, yeah.
You're with him, yes?
She's more than welcome to. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Now, wait till you get to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Gina Cannon. So we, when we first moved into the house, we were really excited. But my parents, they're, they're disabled, they have a handicapped sticker, so there was only room for one car, and then, in the garage, you could park in the garage. So they wouldn't, for them to come over, it's, they, it was such a hassle, they didn't want to come over, because they had to park down the street. We would move our car for them, but it wasn't like comfortable, they didn't feel. And then, my sister came, so we really only wanted two spaces. The, the man who put it in, he convinced us to get the three. We didn't want that. I paid more money for that, but he was very persuasive about it, so I was like, okay. He said we didn't need a permit, we asked, so we didn't know that he didn't, that we did, so that's what happened. But now, it's a mess, and we can't move forward with, so we had a contractor that, he said that he was going to do the, the other part of the house, and he, he kind of scammed us for like $16,000. So now, there's like a pit on the side of our house from him, which we can't fix until this is resolved. So, at this point, we don't even care. We just want it to be resolved, so we can fix the pit on the side of the house. That the contractor, he, he, I guess he was a scam artist, but he said he had permits for everything too, and we fell for it, you know? It was our first, like, new house, so we were very excited and impulsive and...
Again, I apologize for what you're going through, I'm sorry, I feel for you, but let's stay focused on the application here, okay? We're going to need prints that show us how you're going to achieve within the zoning guidelines here, on the side yard of five feet, across everything you're asking. It can't be open-ended, like, we might want the gravel, we might not. You have to give us exactly what you're looking for with supporting prints.
And, and to that extent as well, just to add on to that, I, I, the way I understood it, there was a proposal to put gravel between the concrete and the property line, and I think, Mr. Cannon, you mentioned grass potentially going...
Grass or whatever, gravel, grass.
Yeah, yeah. The difference, the, the difference obviously is gravel you could still park on, right? So it's, it's, it's not really, you cut concrete, put gravel, you're still in the same position. So, the other thing that you mentioned earlier, and it's just coming up to me now that the survey's on the screen, you mentioned potentially having a park aisle or a drive aisle sort of next to the home. And I'm looking at the survey, and it looks like it's six and a half feet at the back of the house to the property line, and 9.9 feet at the front of the house to the property line. So if that's something you would want to pursue as a potential alternative as well...
No.
That's not, so...
No, we've pretty well scratched that.
Okay, my mistake, I thought that's what you had indicated earlier.
I don't think I marked it on the paper.
You did.
Oh, I did? Okay, well, no, we don't, we don't plan on doing anything with the, beside the garage.
Okay.
I never wanted to anyhow. I put a fence in and a gate and everything else.
Okay.
Yeah.
When the contractor, the new contractor proposed it, I, I said, I don't know, I don't, I have this fence I put in and everything, I don't want to do that.
So can we go back to the front edge of the house picture?
The picture? Yeah.
Obviously, the board will all have to chime in, but I think it's fair to say that, let's look at this from a right side and a left side for a second, okay? Let's cut this into that, those slices. If that additional right side concrete were cut such that every point on that guaranteed at least five foot from the property line, then there would be no issue from a zoning perspective.
You'd be in compliance?
You'll be in compliance, if we're looking at the right side.
Right.
Okay?
Except that they would, except for the no parking in the front yard, that would...
Yeah, I didn't, that's what I'm saying.
We're working on the right, right?
But even still, yeah.
We're strictly working on the right right now.
Okay.
But you'd only have one variance involved.
Then, let's go to the left. Now you're violating parking in the front yard.
Right.
And front of the house, yeah, front of the door.
So, if you want to be fully in compliance, you would remove that completely, there would be no issue there.
Okay.
So if you remove that left side addition, and you made the right side addition such that you have a minimum of five feet at any point on there, will that accommodate side by side cars?
Yes.
That's for you to decide.
Yes.
Then you wouldn't have to be in front of us, if you did those two things.
No, no, you still have a variance for the front yard.
Let's see what Bruce has to say on this.
But he said...
I'm saying to remove the front yard.
He said to remove the front yard.
Wait, but... They removed the one in the front yard, but currently have, whatever they have, the current width of that driveway would be acceptable.
Yeah.
If they add on to that driveway at all, to expand the driveway, they would still need the variance for adding the additional parking in the front yard.
Got it. Even if we made the right side compliant to the zoning...
Even if they made, even if they made the right side compliant with the, the side yard setback, they still need it for adding that...
That would be a much lesser intrusive kind of variance.
Yeah, be a single variance.
So how much would have to be cut off of the side in order to make it five feet from the right?
We, we need to see that planned.
That would have to come on the survey.
That's our problem.
That's the plan we need to see.
Yeah, because it, it looks like...
Also, if I can, just if I could add one more thing to, I did meet with the contractor that did the work, I did meet with him, we did have some discussion a while back, actually after the first meeting. We did discuss it, and my recommendation to him was to figure out, you know, the five foot distance off the property line, to make that cut as you're proposing to them, but also on the opposite side, to do that same cut, so that they only need enough to make it two cars wide. So I mean, with the current proposal going, leaving it all the way out, I don't think that that really will work.
Mm-hmm.
Because the sidewalk, again, when we're looking at this picture, the sidewalk would be leading to the opposite side of the...
Steps.
The front steps, so I mean, it's kind of traversing it.
The other question I have for you, Bruce, what, and I don't even know if, if you know the answer to this, approximately, what kind, or even, Mr. and Mrs. Cannon, if you know the answer, approximate, Cannon, apologies, what's the approximate width to fit two cars on a driveway, right? Because I think that plays a role as well. Because theoretically, for example, if they cut five, if they make sure it's five feet on the right side, and they get rid of the entire left side, is that still wide enough for two feet? Because then the left side wouldn't be necessary. I think these are considerations that the board is getting around, so I don't know, Bruce, is there a specific width?
Well, we could actually use specific, I mean, roughly in the, in the zoning chapter, we do have for, you know, parking sizes within, you know, within parking lots. Those are basically the numbers, and I want to say it's, it's either eight foot wide or nine foot wide by like 20 feet deep. That would be a parking, parking space. So let's say the larger, let's say nine by 20, you know, per car, so they would need technically, you know, 18 feet in width, and, you know, 20 feet in depth. But, you know, again, they have 22 feet currently.
And the width right now is only 10.5?
On the original, right?
On the original, yeah.
So they would need to the side, they would need another 10 feet, and that brings you up...
No, 18 to 20 percent, right?
Okay.
So they could get another eight feet in combination of the right side, and/or maybe a little bit from the left side, and cutting everything else out. Are you following the conversation?
Yes.
Does it make any more sense?
Yeah.
The other question I have for you, Bruce, curb cut. Is there anything in the zone that would require the expansion of this curb cut to accommodate these two spaces or?
The curb cut is a little wider than a standard driveway, so they might be able to use what's there currently. If they opted to make that curb cut wider, they'd have to go to the highway department, take out a, get a permit separately from them for cutting the curb and making that curb cut wider.
But is it safe to say that any revision they come back with should stay within this curb cut? Otherwise, there's other discussions.
It would be, yes, it would be wise to stay within the current one.
Where today it's well outside of.
It's a wide curb cut. What if, now, where the stairs go down, if, could they actually, could, could, could it be considered that that whole piece that's the garage onto the right of the front door, to where the stairs start coming down, if I'm making myself clear, could they make it right? Thank you.
If that could be considered, if that could be considered part of the garage, not, not the house.
And then put the concrete down so that they only have to remove the concrete that's on the steps proper, not to where the steps are coming down? Could that be a consideration? And then if he leaves a little bit on the side, as long as he's got the five, could that be a solution that would work?
You sound, you sound good.
Um, looking at.
It's just another variance we'd have to grant.
But it's, but it would be, you know, something that we could put out there, see what the public has to say. We could, we could look at it. To me, it would seem reasonable, especially given that they have parents, they have, you know, very close, you know, immediate family that has some issues. They have some handicap issues. If, would that be, does anybody else think that that might be a solution?
It's possible, looking, if the numbers he's provided are correct, if he takes, I don't know, two feet off his existing 10 on the right, he'd have eight. And narrowest part of the original driveway is 10.5. It would leave him 18.5 feet, which would be the width of two parking spaces. I don't know that I've had, I'd have objection to maybe putting two feet on the left side for a path that could cut in. But you could, if those measurements actually do work out, which we don't really know at this point, that would give them enough room.
See, what I'm thinking here is like, you see where he's got put out for the cutout? To put lawn there so that he'd only have a path to the front door? How about we forget about that, get rid of everything to the left of that cutout, go straight up to the stairs?
I don't know how wide the cutout is.
Well, I don't either because we don't have, because we don't have a real survey.
We need a real plan.
See, that's the first thing I think you're hearing, that you're gonna need to give us a better.
And a restated proposal saying this is what, the variance we need.
So if we can do it what we think is gonna work for, for next time and then we'll get that, that'll be.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, yeah, I would think.
Does everybody think that that would work out if they just went like right up to there, to where the stairs go down?
I don't know. I'd like to see it before I even comment, I think it's plausible.
Yeah.
And then they could do a little bit more over here, problem solved.
And, and I would just, just so you guys understand too, and to make it easier for you as well, the next time if you have a proposal, you know, if you're down to two, for example, have two separate proposals, just so that the board understands exactly what they're looking at. Because like I indicated, just from, from a legal basis, right now, for example, we're looking at parking in the front yard. But if you need a side yard setback, unfortunately, you would have to come back to a separate meeting. But if you know that ahead of time, the board can consider that at the next meeting, the neighbors will get notice of that. And then if you don't end up needing it because of some, you know, variation, that's fine. But I would say, you know, it sounds like the board is requesting a proper survey and clear indications, and if there's a version one and a version two, version one and version two, sort of not merging them. So try to boil it down to what exactly works, especially given the handicap necessities too. You might need some more room between cars or you might need a pathway to the stairs. I don't know, but as close to final as possible so that the board can understand.
Please, please speak in the microphone. Please speak in the microphone.
Yeah, we can, we'll hear you.
Um, that's a great idea, maybe we could even make it a ramp too, would be better too. So this way, you know, if, for the handicapped family member, so that, or make it like wider steps or something. So that would be a good idea.
Sure, it's another. Whatever the revision is, you would submit it and then the building inspector will be able to look at it and, and see what compliance there is, what requirements, what's required to come into compliance and then the board has a better idea.
All right, so we're gonna go with those plan, that plan and then, um, yeah, well, it's gonna be in the minutes, right? So we can just take it from there and have.
The, the, the discussion today?
What we just came up with, yeah.
Well, the board has, the board has just been discussing, no one's really come up with anything, but yeah, you could pull up the video, look back at the video and see what was discussed, use that as inspiration or whatever you need. Just come with whatever, as close to final plan or plans for the next one.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
I, I just want to put out there in spirit transparency, next month, we'll also only have board members in attendance, I just wanted to do that.
Yeah, okay, that's okay.
So we need a, a motion to adjourn this public. So do I have a motion to adjourn this?
Unless they have anything else.
Oh, of course, of course.
On the cutout for the sidewalk, I measured it, as far as I can tell, it's 24 feet.
Again, come back to us.
Yeah, with the plans.
So, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, we'd be, and you know what, a survey will never, you'll always be happy you had it done.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll get it.
You know, and you, you go to sell the house or whatever, you're gonna need one anyway and it'll just cost more then. So you might as well do it, it'll be of use to you in the future.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Elaine, call the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good luck.
Hope we were helpful.
Yeah, we all want to have. That's it, agenda items. Can I have a motion to close this?
Oh.
We're gonna do ZBA after we close, right? The.
Well, we, do it before we close and it's just, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, good. So we have a miscellaneous item on the agenda. Designation of lead agency in accordance with SECRE.
Okay.
So we're being asked to consider notification from the planning board on their intent to serve as the lead agency for the amended concept plan approval in connection with the proposal to amend a previously approved concept plan and amended site plan for a two-family building with a total of 64 units. So did anyone get a chance to review this in the packet? So she has the second page of the agenda. You can review this, Judy, arrange the charges to review it. Give you a moment to review it.
There's something in here that I didn't look at.
Yeah.
I, uh.
Two multifamily buildings, total of 64 units. Tyranda. The amended concept plan. All right, I don't understand this, I want to explain this.
I, it, you can go ahead or I could, I could, so just as a quick rundown, the, basically what's going on is there's a, there's a third amended site plan approval here for 248 Tyranda. It may need to come before the ZBA at some point for variances, may, it's not guaranteed. And because it may need to come before the ZBA, the planning board who is trying, who's, you know, sent out the notice of intent to declare itself as lead agency, has to notify all involved or interested agencies and because the ZBA might hear it, they're an involved or interested agency. Right now, the, it's gone through multiple iterations, I believe, according to the, the sort of narrative we got from the planning board, this has been around for about 10 years, this project. The planning board is declaring its intent to become lead agency and what the ZBA has to at this point do, after reviewing generally the project, having some familiarity with it, you can either say, we have no objection to the planning board serving as lead agency, we have no position, which is essentially the same thing, or we object to the planning board serving as lead agency. It is typical, of course, in site plan approvals, that the planning board is lead agency for secret review purposes, because they're involved with the application at every step. But the reason the ZBA is involved here is there's a potential for variances.
Right.
So that's sort of where we stand right now. My understanding is, according to this narrative, what, the use of one of the buildings is gonna be changed from a two-story office to a three-story multifamily and that requires an amendment of their concept plan and, and things like that. So they are before the.
Because they were supposed to have commercial on the first floor?
I'm not 100% certain.
It was a third building that was going to be commercial, it was two apartments, buildings. The third building was supposed to be commercial because it's in the Fishkill Creek District.
The whole thing was supposed to be commercial or the first floor was supposed to be commercial?
There was a whole building.
I'm thinking back 10 years ago.
No, there was a whole building that was supposed to be commercial.
With this project, the conceptual plan that was approved by the city council was that buildings 200 and 300 would be all residential and building 100, which is the building that they're currently, you know, going back in front of the city council and the planning board, that was supposed to be all commercial.
Oh.
So now they, now they're trying to convert that to all residential.
All residential.
Yeah, with no commercial, that's, I believe, their current proposal to the, to the council for a change in the concept plan.
Is that gonna require them to come back to the ZBA to change that? Because I remember there was a whole thing on that.
I know they were there once, I know they came back once before and I think they just, they never pursued the application after a meeting or two.
Yeah, nothing ever, right.
Yeah, they were before us in 2021 because they wanted a variance to, according to the zoning at the time, the commercial building was supposed to be built concurrent or before the residential.
They wanted to do the residential.
And they wanted the, an area variance to go ahead and build the residential without building the commercial first or concurrently. And if I remember correctly, they withdrew.
They withdrew?
Yeah, they withdrew the request.
Isn't that a use variance though?
It could have been.
If and when it comes here, we could determine that, but right now.
So you vote on whether we, whether we say yes, they could be lead agency? That's all we need to do here?
Exactly, that's all, that's all the board needs to do.
So as George mentioned, there are three things. Has, we have no objection to them being the lead agency, we take no position, or we object to them being the lead agency.
Okay.
Do we have any reason to object? I mean, isn't it the norm that they would take the lead?
It's typical that the planning board is lead agency, some, sometimes.
Especially with SECRE.
Yeah, especially with, yeah. Again, this might not even come before the zoning board.
Right.
It's just possible, so it's not unusual for the planning board to be lead agency. And, you know, it's gonna be before the city council for concept plan and planning board for the amended site plan.
So let's take a roll through all three of them. Stowe, have no objection, take no position or objects.
I have no objection.
Judy?
No objection.
No position.
Okay, and I have no objection. So three no objections, one no position.
Okay, so we would just need a, a motion to sign this off as the ZBA having no objection to the planning board's.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the favor.
Aye.
Okay, no objection.
Now we can close the meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to close tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting?
I move.
Stowe, do I have a second?
Second.
Judy, call the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good luck.
Do you want me to print my name and sign it right?